I am calling to order this special meeting of the Lebanon Planning Board on Thursday, September 3, 2020 at 6:30 PM. We're doing this remotely via Microsoft Teams. And I will first ask Tim Corwin of staff to review the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Tim Corwin with the planning department. Other staff members on tonight's meeting include David Brooks, Plan Director, and Brian Vincent, the City Engineer. Just have a few remarks to make at the outset of the meeting. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 issued on March 23, 2020, in accordance with Executive Order 2020-04, the Lebanon Planning Board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with Emergency Order Number 12, the City of Lebanon has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video, to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the planning board during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the planning board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and to participate in the meeting by visiting lebaninnh.gov/live and clicking on the link for the September 3 Special Planning Board Meeting. Instructions on how to attend are provided on the webpage. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves and spell their first and last names before beginning to speak. Likewise, we ask all board members and staff to please identify yourself before speaking. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, microphones will be muted by staff until you have a question or comment. For people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the microphone icon that appears on the Teams platform if you hover your cursor on the middle lower half of your screen. For people calling in by phone, please press *6 to unmute yourself. *6. If anyone has difficulty with access during the course of the meeting, please email us at planning@lebaninnh.gov, or you can use the chat function on Microsoft Teams to indicate the issue that you're having. If we can provide technical assistance, we will try to do so. If we are unable to do so, it is still worthwhile to be aware of problems that participants may be encountering so that we can try and address these for future meetings. In the event that we experience widespread and severe technical difficulties such that we are unable to continue holding the meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. All votes that are taken during the meeting tonight shall be done by roll call vote. We ask that you not use the chat function unless you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties. And finally, please note that this meeting is being recorded, and it will be available on the city's website at lebaninnh.gov/AgendaCenter. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tim. I now proceed to a roll call. As always, I'm doing this in alphabetical order by first name. Would you please signify your presence by saying "present" and tell us whether you're alone in whatever room you happen to be in? So I'm obviously present, and I am alone. Gregorio? I don't know if Gregorio's there. Jeremy?
Present and alone.
Thank you. Kathy?
Present and alone.
Kim?
Present and alone.
Laurel? Laurel is not with us. And Matt?
Present and alone.
So we have five members present, which is a quorum. I will, from time to time, because I can't see otherwise, check to see if Gregorio and/or Laurel come on to the meeting.
Is Tom here?
Tom is not here. Tom said that he is sick, unfortunately. Joan is attending a Class 6 road meeting, and neither Jim nor Karen are available. So let's hope that Gregorio and Laurel manage to log on. And with that, I will move to the one item that we have, which is a discussion of the Lebanon Housing Authority application. So what we're going to do tonight is the following. At our last meeting, the applicant gave about an hour's presentation, a very thorough presentation. So unless there's something from staff, I'm going to suggest the following order. I will ask board members to inform other board members if they have been on a site visit and whatever comments they might have of the site visit. I will then open the meeting for public comments. Then we'll go to responses from the applicant and perhaps from the city to whatever comments we got from the public. Then we'll go to a board discussion. Then we'll go to the two waivers, consider those two waivers, and then we'll carry on towards a decision on this application. Any questions or comments or other suggestions?
Bruce, this is Kathy.
Yes, Kathy.
Did we get any information on what waivers the applicant is asking for?
Yes, that's in your packet. So there are two waivers. One has to do with two pads on the side of the building for air conditioning. We'll talk about those. And then the other is the sidewalk.
Okay. And you were saying that the board discussion, but is the board going to be part of the public hearing as well?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, site visit, we didn't do this. Last meeting, we decided that we didn't need a formal site visit. The property has been state, a map was sent around, the survey. Any comments from board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Matt.
Yeah. So, you know, I took a look at the site, and I think, you know, I really, I'd say, going to the site and then after, in the wake of both the presentation we had, which I agree was very thorough, and I thank the applicant for giving us a very thorough presentation and great pictures. In the wake of that and then the visiting the site, I think my main concern that I'd like to hear, I think from both the applicant and staff, is, I think principally, in my mind, about traffic and then also about the bus pickup area. I'm a little concerned about where that's placed relative to the roadway, looking at the site and driving on it and where, how close it is to the stop signs and the intersection. So that's, those were my big-picture concerns. I didn't really have any real big concerns about the actual building based on the site visit.
All right. Well, let's hold those until a little further. Any other comments from other board members? My concern was the wetlands, but clearly the state showing the driveway in the center of the line indicated that is well away from the wetlands. So I didn't have anything further. Anything else from other members?
You're talking just about site visits now, right?
Yeah, just about site visit, yes. Anything that you want to share with the other board members? All right. Then I will move on to public comments. So I invite members from the public. It's unfortunate that I can't see you. Would you please announce, and I will listen for your voice, anyone that wishes from the public to make a comment on this application, this would be the appropriate time to do so. I note that we've received in writing, I think, three or four letters, plus there was an R, a letter to the editor in the Valley News. Is there no one from the public? All right. I think this might be appropriate time because there was one letter that was very concerned with traffic. And Matt, you've raised the question of traffic and the bus stop. So perhaps I could ask the applicant to make some comments in terms of traffic and the bus stop and respond to Matt's comment.
So, hello, this is Dita Alonso. I am the Executive Director of Lebanon Housing Authority. My name is spelled D-I-T-H-A-L-O-N-S-O.
Thank you.
Okay, so I represent Lebanon Housing Authority for the proposed 44-unit development at 258 Heater Road. Joining me this evening is our development team as follows. Jeffrey Merritt, J-E-F-F-R-E-Y-M-E-R-R-I-T-T, from Granite Engineering. Jerry Weebolt, J-E-R-R-Y-W-U-E-B-B-O-L-T, Project Coordinator, Right Track Design. We also have Greg Chakmakas, attorney with Sheen, Finney, Bass, and Green. And lastly, we have our wetland scientist, Tom Sokolowski of TES Environmental, if there were to be any questions on the wetlands. So your first question, I think, was about traffic, and I will pass that over to our engineer, Jeffrey Merritt.
Yes. Good evening to the board. For the record, my name is Jeff Merritt, and we are the civil site engineers for this project. Can everybody see the screen? Can you see the plan on the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
And Jeff, if I may just interrupt just momentarily, this is Matt Hall. If you'd like me to be more specific about my concerns at any point in your response, you know, let me know.
Sure. Let me tell you a little bit about the traffic that the project would generate and see if it answers your questions. And then if it doesn't, we can try to answer anything further from you. I talked a little bit about the traffic for the project at the last meeting. And if you recall, this is a project which generates 44 new units, and these are apartment units. This is a three-story building. So when we look at traffic for this type of use, it falls under what's called multifamily mid-rise, which is multifamily buildings that have three to 10 stories of floors. So we look at the traffic, and the traffic is based on a certain number of trips per unit. And what we focus on is really the peak hour, you know, how does traffic from this project impact the roadway network during those peak hours in the AM and the PM during the commuting times? It's not necessarily the total number of trips over the 24-hour period. We're really focused on those AM and PM peak hours to see if there's a significant impact associated with the project. So using statistical data, we can estimate what a particular use like this should generate during those peak hours. And so in the AM peak hour, based on a 44-unit building, we would anticipate a total of 16 trips during that peak hour. And some of those trips, of course, would be coming into the site, and some of those trips would be leaving the site. So based on the distribution, it would be about four of those trips would be coming in, and 12 would be going out. So 16 trips during the AM peak hour. In the PM peak hour, we can expect 19 total trips. 12 of those would be coming in, and seven of those would be leaving the site. So 16 in the AM peak hour and 19 in the PM peak hour. So that would equate to about one additional trip every 3.4 or 5 minutes in the AM peak hour and about 3.15 minutes in the PM peak hour. So overall, it's a very low generator in terms of peak hour traffic. And, you know, we, again, we look at this as not how many trips it is during, over the course of the whole day. We're really concerned about how those trips impact the adjacent roadway during the peak time. So that's the traffic portion of it. The bus stop portion, I want to talk quickly about that. This is an existing conditions plan that was prepared by the surveyor. I'm going to blow it up for you. In this area right now, today, there's actually a bus stop. So what we're proposing isn't necessarily a new bus stop location, but we're proposing an upgrade to what's there now. What happens right now is there are some signs on the side of the road that say there's a bus stop. There is no pull-off lane for the bus. So the bus stops in the middle of the road. People that use the bus wait on the side of the road, and that's how it operates today. Our project proposes an enhancement, a significant upgrade, and we've worked with Advanced Transit on both the location of the bus stop and the configuration that you see here. The proposal would add a pull-out lane, or a turnout, they call it, for a bus. It would allow the bus to get out of the through lanes, the travel lanes, and be on the side of the road in a shoulder to load and unload passengers. And then in addition to that, there would be both a bus stop as well as a sidewalk along Heater Road in that area for pedestrians to wait where there is none now. So it's not necessarily a new bus stop, but it's just a significantly enhanced one.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So first of all, Mr. Merritt, thank you. I appreciate it. And part of, I should say, my concerns are, well, let's start with the bus stop for a second. I think my concerns with that, you know, partly maybe this has to do with the fact that the current intersection is a four-way stop and not a light. And I think that, you know, I think it's worth noting that the police department had a concern about the traffic, especially being how close this is to the school. And I'm looking at how close the driveway is to the bus pull-off. Part of me sees that as a potential concern. And then there's the broader question, and to be fair to you, the applicant engineer, this is beyond you. But we have a lot of, we have a lot of projects that are coming online on this road. And I think that while, yes, it makes perfect sense that your traffic study for your specific project is not, does not rise to the level that would require significant infrastructure improvements. I do think, knowing that we already have Dartmouth College's project that's been approved, that's down farther up the road, I just, I wonder about what's, what, I just, I wonder about the big picture here, and I wonder about the intersection. I wonder about, I don't know, I think there's a lot of questions. And for some reason, for me, that bus pull-off, I think is, to me, and again, I mean, it'll be used more now, I would assume, probably, with a big building there. So, all right, that's kind of my concerns. And, you know, staff, please comment if you want to. Mr. Merritt, comment if you want to. Although, obviously, some of what I've said is beyond your project.
Yeah, I mean, let me comment on the driveway location. So the placement of the driveway with relation to that, we do have sightlines to the intersection. So there's no sort of safety issue from an engineering perspective with the location of the bus stop relative to that driveway. So we weren't concerned about that. The traffic that you're talking about, it sounds like it's a bigger issue picture than really our project. What we do, and really what the process is, as you and some of the board members probably know, is we need to look at how this project affects it. And the reason we prepare that trip generation memo is so that you can get a feel of the magnitude of one project versus the other. And really, if you look at some of the other uses which are allowed, you know, either by right or special exception like this use in this district, and you were to compare some of those trips and traffic associated with those types of use, for example, like a financial institution, like a bank, or fitness or health club, you know, ours is actually significantly less in terms of a generator. So it's a quite small peak hour generator, that's for sure.
I guess, you know, and yeah, and again, I would like to hear staff's perspective on this. I think the other part of it, too, is if the other applicants are all chipping in financially for improvements to this roadway, I do think it probably would be only fair that, at least proportionally, this, that the applicant here would have to contribute something, maybe, again, to scale, but perhaps something since it is adding to the usage on the roadway. Anyway, Mr. Chair, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Matt. Kim, I see your hand is raised.
Hi. I had sort of a follow-up question to that, and maybe you don't know the answer, but with regards to the bus, do you anticipate that there would be, especially at peak time, more need for, or additional stops for the bus, or additional routes? Or I know there's a bus stop there now, but will it be used more frequently?
I'm not aware of any plans to change the, you know, the bus route and/or the frequency of it. That was never mentioned to us by Advanced Transit. I would, I'd like to think that it would be a nice bus stop for not only our community and facility to use, but it would certainly be more inviting for those that already use it. But I don't think you're going to see a use of this bus stop rise to the level of having to expand service out here, at least my understanding.
I think kind of what I was getting at, piggyback somewhat Matt was asking, which is if there's more frequent use of it during peak time, would that back the traffic up? But if, maybe that's not of concern.
If I may speak, this is Dita Alonso from Lebanon Housing. I did speak to Van Chesnut, who is the Director of Advanced Transit several times, and it is my understanding that the current bus schedule will remain the same as it is now. All we're doing is enhancing the area where the bus will pull off to pick up the population at large that uses it now, that they weren't going to increase stops. That was my understanding from Advanced Transit.
And then something to also point out, you know, the current situation requires the bus to stop in the travel lane and let people on and off the vehicle. So that in and of itself actually affects the capacity of the road. In other words, you've got a bus blocking through traffic to load and unload pedestrians. In this instance, we have a bypass. So whether loading and unloading takes 30 seconds or five minutes, it can be done in a way that it doesn't interfere with the through traffic. So it should, it should help the situation. And that was, that was something that actually the zoning board was concerned with. And when we were going through the special exception process, we made this change to show a bus turnout here at a request by them.
Kathy, I see your hand.
Yes. With regard to traffic, I want to acknowledge the residents in the area who sent a letter to the board expressing their concerns about traffic both on their street, which was Dartmouth Avenue, which is a bit north of this, off Mount Support Road, I believe, as well as this intersection. And I was puzzled by it because we always appreciate residents' comments and contributions, but we didn't hear them when the 309 units for Dartmouth Hitchcock were proposed. And now we're still in the midst of the project across from Timberwood that has, I can't remember, 250 units or something like that. So well over 500 units, which would come down and possibly turn on their road. I was a little bit confused by their concern about these 44 units, which, unless I'm not understanding it correctly, will most likely not be using Dartmouth Avenue at all. I think the bus pull-off lane is an improvement. I know when we were considering Dartmouth Hitchcock, Michael's project, as well as other projects on Mount Support Road, I tried to bring up the four-way stop at this corner as something that would, that might also be of a concern. And I was told it was the intersection up at La Hay Drive and Mount Support that was underperforming, and that was the one that people were making contributions to improve and that there was no need to address this one. So I would, I'm curious as to why there would be a need for this 44-unit project to contribute when we have over 500 units north of there, who would most likely be using it far more heavily, that weren't asked to contribute to it, at least not to my knowledge, unless I'm mistaken about that.
Kathy, I was going to introduce that subject. Before I ask David or Brian Vincent to comment on it, let me check both with two board members, Gregorio, Laurel, have either of you joined? And is there anyone from the public that would like, in particular, people from Dartmouth Avenue who would like to comment on the two letters that were submitted? If not, then I will turn to David and/or Brian to comment from the city's perspective on the issue of traffic.
Mr. Chair, this is David Brooks.
Yes, David.
I can, I can talk a little bit about some of this, and certainly Brian can chime in as well. With respect to transit, the existing Blue Route has a 30-minute headway. So there's a bus going through here every 30 minutes. It is a master plan goal, and I believe it's sort of an Advanced Transit organizational goal to increase the headways to 15 minutes at some point. They have to figure out how to, how to be able to do that and how to be able to pay for it. But that, I think the comment was made that it's not going to increase the number of, the need for buses coming through here. They're still going to come at 30-minute intervals, or perhaps 15 in the future. But Mr. Merritt mentioned also that with the proposed design, with the pull-off lane, it gets them out of the flow of traffic. So if they have to stop and spend more than 10 seconds or 15 seconds for someone to board the bus, they are out of the travelway, and vehicle operations can continue through here. With respect to the number of trips, we did look back at this intersection based on the Saxon traffic study, which is the most recent one that we have for the Mount Support projects. We have, we don't have an application for that fourth project yet, so we're not going to consider them for the moment because they haven't even applied. Looking at this intersection, the operations, the existing operations look very solid at this intersection in terms of level of service. Looking forward, assuming that the Hitchcock project, the Michael's project, and even the Saxon project go forward, the overall operations of this intersection remain quite good, even out to 2031. So we weren't overly, you know, again, I want Brian to speak to this as well, but it didn't appear to be an overly large concern. One thing that Mr. Merritt didn't specify in his trip generation memo is the trip distribution component, which is that not every trip coming out of here is going to be going to the north. Some of them may be going south, in which case they won't be going through this intersection at all. If you use the same census data-based distribution as Saxon and Michael's, then perhaps 35% of the trips then perhaps thirty five percent of the trips would be going south and would not go through this intersection at all. The other sixty five, so that nineteen trips in the in the PM peak hour might become twelve more cars going through this intersection, going going to the north. So again, it's a, it's a very small number. The existing travel through there is just shy of six hundred cars in the morning peak hour and well over eight hundred cars in the PM peak hour. So to add twelve cars in the AM, or I'm sorry, the PM peak, or to add ten cars in the AM peak is a very, very small fraction. The last comment that I'll make before I turn it over to Brian is with respect to the proposed or, yeah, the proposed special assessment district that the city manager spoke to the board about with respect to the Michaels application. It is ultimately going to be the city council's decision whether to create that and whether and how to create that district. But from the city manager's point of view, he does not anticipate extending that district this far south. It would, it would be quite a bit farther north. So that so that this project, even if it were to move forward, would not be within the what is proposed to be, or what is anticipated to be the proposed special assessment district with respect to the Mount Support Road and La Haye Drive intersection. And I'll turn it over to Brian to to fill in any details there.
Please, Brian.
Hi, this is Brian Vincent. So starting with the bus stop, I agree with David and others' assessments that the bus would be out of the traffic lane in order to pick up riders. So that's a benefit. The one question I have for the applicant is, in terms of the location of the turnoff, was it ever considered to move that further toward the proposed driveway? And if so, is that creating another problem relative to the driveway itself in terms of site distance? We, again, for the record, I'm Jeff Merritt with Granite Engineering. We we didn't look at shifting the location further or closer to the site driveway. We essentially left the location pretty much where it is today and provided the pull off. It, I suppose it could be slid closer to the driveway. I don't think it 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 matters in terms of site distance. I think our our site distance looking towards the intersection from our driveway is pretty good. Obviously, we couldn't move the bus stop directly on top of the, you know, five feet away from the driveway. But it could be slid a little bit. I don't know that there's a benefit either way, in my opinion.
Would there be a benefit? I'm just thinking, I don't know how many cars at any point in time are stopping, waiting for others to go through the stop signs. Might it make it easier for the bus to be able to pull out if there are only a few cars beside it? Rather, I could see the bus getting, bus driver getting frustrated if people keep coming in beside them.
I think that the distance we would have to slide it for something like that to to accommodate more queuing at the stop bar. We don't have that distance. We're talking about a slight shift at at the very best. I don't think we're going to get a number of additional queued vehicles in front of the bus.
Because I I didn't measure it, but just from memory, it would only take, I guess, three or four cars stopped at the stop sign to block the bus. If others kept coming, I I don't know, I just throw that out as a comment. Kathy, I see your end.
Yes, just to follow up on some of the comments I made earlier about the residents from Dartmouth Avenue, they seem to have a a strongly held feeling about traffic on that street. When I read it, as I said, I didn't think it pertains so much to this site, but I was just wondering if someone from staff could recommend to them who they might address that to rather than as part of this particular application.
This is David Brooks. On that issue, there is a Public Safety Committee with the city that is composed of the directors and chiefs of Public Works, the Police Department and the Fire Department. They they are the the organization or the body that receives requests for speed tables and similar traffic calming measures. That would be, that might be an appropriate place to to submit that concern relative to existing traffic. Obviously, I mean, they're they're noting that it's occurring today with respect to traffic coming through the through the neighborhood. I agree, I I think I agree with your assessment that it's it's more of an existing condition than it is related to the proposed application.
Thank you.
David, did you receive any comments from the Police Department relative to the letters from people on Dartmouth Avenue claiming that there've been a lot of accidents at that intersection?
We we have not received it. This is Tim Corwin. We have not received any additional comment from the Police Department.
Thank you, Tim.
Chair, can I add a bit? This is Brian again.
Yeah, Brian, please.
Sure. So in with regard to the bus stop location, I, my personal opinion is that if there's no detrimental impact to the proposed driveway in terms of site distance or functionality, I don't see an issue with sliding that further toward the driveway, at least a car length or two. In that way, the bus driver does have a little bit more queue to to build up before he can pull out. And and having that stop that close to the intersection, I think, is, I don't know, it's it's not, in my mind, the best case scenario unless there's a reason that it, you know, causes problems with other areas of the site or the driveway. The other thing I can raise here is with respect to David's comments. So on this project, the the applicant prepared a trip generation memo. So he's, he was not charged with studying the intersection. So we're fortunate to have real data in hand based on other projects proposed along Mount Support Road, which they did study this intersection, and that was what David was referring to. And and that, again, that data, as as David mentioned, in both the build and no build, going all the way out to two thousand thirty one, the level of service at this intersection is not, it's it's actually pretty good, even going through the twenty thirty one timeframe.
Hey, Brian?
Yes.
This is Matt Hall. Can I, can I ask you a follow up question, or do you want me to wait until you're done?
No, that's fine, yep.
Thank you. So my only question about that is, so the 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 information you have for the intersection that says is probably good for a decade, is that based on the assumption that the projects we are that are before the board all get built?
All get built with the exception of one that it hasn't applied as of this date, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy?
Yes, this is maybe a question for Brian as well. Other people were more concerned with traffic. My main concern I'm not hearing an echo. Is that I know this is a very wet lot and has, is Brian comfortable with the all the drainage issues from this lot?
Yeah, so I looked at that closely myself. I looked at the test pits that were done for estimated seasonal high water table. I was surprised that it wasn't found in a shallow or depth, especially because there's a wetland in the vicinity. And and the design relies on that water table being low. I I might suggest that Tom might want to comment on that, since he delineated the wetlands, and I think he might have done some some soil borings.
Certainly, and thank you. Can anybody, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Please introduce yourself.
Very good, thank you. My name is Tom Sokolowski. My name is spelled T O M S O K O L O S K I. I'm a certified wetland scientist and certified soil scientist with T E S Environmental Consultants. I performed the wetland delineation on February five, two thousand twenty, and traversed the entire lot, not only to delineate wetlands, but also to eventually create a site specific soil survey for the Alteration of Terrain Permit Program. And in approaching the lot, first of all, in wintertime, generally not a great idea to be doing this sort of work, but the conditions were terrific, considering it was February. There are only small areas of snow and very thin snow on the site surface. Finding a lot of very large boulders on the upland portion of the property outside of the existing fill area where a home was located at some point close to the intersection. And seasonal high water tables I found to be quite deep. For site specific soil survey, we only go down about forty inches for a a picture of things. But in the upper portion of the site, where the existing northern end of the building is proposed, I found seasonal high water tables deeper than forty inches. Between the boulders and many places, there were large openings where I could insert my soil probe down very deep. Found no high water table in those down past forty inches. But I did not witness the test pits myself. But in mapping the soils in the upper part of the site, I did find them to be well drained, meaning that they have a seasonal high water table deeper than forty inches, that there was no bedrock or impervious surface such as a hardpan in them. And therefore, I mapped those soils in the drier part of the site as Charlton fine sandy loam. Progressing further to the east along the driveway that goes out to the medical center, the soils change a bit, they lose some of their their boulders at the surface. And eventually, further off the development parcel mostly, the soils become very silty and the soil type changes there. There's a gradual change towards a slightly higher seasonal high water table in the eastern part and the central part of the lot approaching the wetland. The water table comes to between about twenty and forty inches. And then, of course, within the wetland, the water table is at or near the surface. But that that is my observation of seasonal high water tables on on the property.
Tom, this year, we've noticed that the the rivers and lakes are really low because it's been a very dry year. Does that affect the the water tables on a lot like this?
Only during the times when that water table is as low as it has been. When I was there in February, water conditions were much closer to normal. We hadn't had a whole lot of snowfall, so we didn't have a big snowpack to melt. But conditions were warm enough that the storms that did happen were more frequently rain than than snow. And the water tables that I observed at that time, I would consider to be typical for for the soil types I was observing and typical for that time of year. And the features that I use to make a determination as to seasonal high water tables are the soil features that are left after the water table has been high at past times. And soil, what are called redoxymorphic features, or an old term for that, were models, are generally what that would lead me to determine the seasonal high water table to be. And those are the features that, in the drier part of the site, were deeper than forty inches. And in the moderately well drained portions of the site, within twenty to forty inches.
And one more question along the same lines. The larger developments that were, have approved or are working with Merrick and the Dartmouth Michaels Site farther north on Mount Support Road, they had a limitation that did not allow them to exceed the peak flow of water coming off those sites because of the much increased impervious surface. But the amount of water coming off those site and the duration that water would be coming off those sites, either directed into nearby wetlands or into the sanitary sewers, was substantially greater because of the impervious surface. Does any of the water from those sites farther north end up working its way down to this area?
I I think Jeff Merritt may be able to speak more to that as it's an engineering question. And I did not review off site areas, so if I might turn that over to Jeff to answer.
Sure. Let me flip to a plan that might help explain it. One more. So what happens is up here on the top of the page is the driveway to the clinic. And that driveway essentially cuts off the watershed that flows onto our property. So there's is very limited off site watershed that actually flows onto our property. Our, the topography on our site is such that it actually flows and it's bowled down to this one wetland area that Tom mapped in this corner. There's a small wetland area over here that has a very small drainage area from our site that flows to it, one that we're not working in. But our development is really working in the watershed that flows to this wetland complex right here. As part of our design, I mentioned it last time, we have a few stormwater elements to to mitigate some of the things that you were talking about. You talked about increasing volume runoff and and peak rate of runoff. So when we design these projects, not only the the local regulations, but the state regulations, there are regulations in place which which don't allow for those increases. They're they're specifically just not allowed. So part of our design is to model this site prior to development as it is today, and then model it with the stormwater software and and determine how it will act after development, after you place this building, after you place these parking lots and sidewalks. And so what we do, we know we're paving the property. We know that we're paving or putting up a building and adding impervious coverage. So we necessarily need to mitigate those those impacts. And that's done through through the design and ultimately the construction of some stormwater best management practices. This area out here between Old Etna Road and the new building, I mentioned that we would be doing a bioretention area. Bioretention area is a filtration practice. It's a stormwater pond that uses a specified media to filtrate, to store and filtrate stormwater. Some of it is allowed to infiltrate into the soils below it. And then larger storms are allowed to discharge out through an overflow. But that's an improved stormwater treatment mechanism with the state of New Hampshire. The reason we put that type of stormwater feature in this particular location is because it can blend into site landscaping quite well. Unless you were familiar with the best management practice in in bioretention areas, you may not recognize that as a stormwater feature. It will look more or less like a a landscaped mulched island, except that it will be concave instead of mound. And then for the bulk of the site, or or at least the parking lot portion of the site, there's another stormwater best management practice proposed in this location. That is called a surface sand filter. It's very similar to the bioretention pond in that it's a filtering practice. It's a specified media, stormwater comes in through it, goes through the media for stormwater treatment. And so the the big difference between a bioretention and a sand filter is that sand filters do not use plants in the interior of it as part of the treatment mechanism. So through the installation of those major stormwater ponds or or major stormwater best management practices in some pre-treatment, including a sediment for bay, catch basins with sumps, we can mitigate the stormwater impact that we have discharged off site. And so again, we look at the property as it exists today, figure out what's going off site today. And then we design these ponds at such size to not only treat the stormwater, but to reduce the flows to at or below what they are today leaving the site. So I hope that answers your question. It's a thoroughly designed stormwater system. It gets reviewed by not only city engineering staff, but Tom Sokolowski mentioned alteration of train. This permit rises to the level of needing an alteration of terrain permit. And that stormwater design is front and center with N H D E S and what the alteration of terrain bureau looks at.
Well, that's very helpful, but it actually doesn't answer my question. Maybe I can state it more clearly here. My question had to do with the properties that are being built on the side of a mountain up north off of Mount Support Road and the increased amount of runoff that's going to be coming from those properties downhill. And my question is, will all of that water coming off those properties be handled by the wetlands east of Mount Support Road? Or will some of that water end up coming down the hill and end up in the vicinity of this intersection in this property?
So Kathy, I don't think that's the question that we can have the applicant to respond to. But Brian, did I ask you to respond?
Sure. This is Brian. Yes. That, my review of those projects relative to this one indicates that there'll be no run-on from anything happening up that area of Mount Support Road relative to this project. Those large wetlands don't discharge any flow to this site.
No, it wasn't the wetlands. It's the projects themselves.
Well, the projects go into the wetlands, so they don't come here.
That was the question. Okay. Thank you.
And Kathy, as far as volumes go, I don't know if this project has any increase in volume. It may not because it relies on some infiltration practices. The city of Lebanon allows for increases in volumes as long as there's no increase in peak flow. And my understanding is this project meets the criteria with respect to increases in peak flow. And I believe the two-year storm, there's no increase in volume, which is another standard.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, David.
This is David. I was just gonna add that the, if you look at the city's G I S system, the wetlands that exist between Mount Support Road and Route 120 uphill of the site, they drain under Mount Support Road and they flow behind Dartmouth Avenue. And they make their way down to Denzmore Pond. And from there, they continue under the interstate and make their way to the Mascombe River. So they, those wetlands do not drain towards this site. They drain around it, basically, as Brian just said.
All right. I would like, at this moment, if we could, to move on to a discussion of the two waivers, unless any of the board members had questions that I didn't give you a chance to ask. I just, in terms of waivers, just want to make sure that board members have noticed in the most recent package that we received, there are a lot of sketches. The applicant has done a fabulous job with sketches. I congratulate them. At the end of those sketches, the pages aren't numbered, but at the end, there are five that address the question of these pads, the two pads and equipment on either side of the building. So perhaps I could ask there, there's one of them. Can I ask the applicant just to describe the, as I say, these are really helpful sketches?
So yes, this is Jerry Weebolt, W U E B B O L T. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, Jerry.
So the rendering that you're looking at presently is the rendering representing the heater pads on the entrance drive side. So the pads are showing up on the site plan. They're located within the ten-foot setback or recommended ten-foot setback. So that's the request for the waiver. The layout shows exactly the landscaping that's being proposed. It shows two heater-style units. Basically, we're providing heat and air conditioning to the building and to the residents. So there are four of these, two on either side and two strategically located on the ends of the building, allowing for providing heat and air conditioning to the building. So that was a view. The last picture was a view of what you would view from the entrance drive. This is a view from the street as you enter the property. And as you can see, and that is a true representation of the amount of landscaping that is being suggested by the landscape architect, of which is part of the submission. So if we go on the other side, again, there are two heating units. They're actually heat pump units, very similar to maybe what you have at your house as a split system. They produce waste heat, take heat out of the air and provide it for the building. They're fairly sizable. And as you can see, again, they are landscaped, they are fenced in, and they are within the ten-foot area as we are proposing. But they're essentially two units on both sides providing heat and air conditioning to the building.
Judging by the door, would I be right in assuming those are about six feet high each?
They are, yes. They're about six feet high by three by four.
Questions from board members?
This is Kathy. Just have a comment especially about this one. I have no problem with the placement of these units. It's just always been my understanding that units like this need to breathe. And you've got them not only fenced in, but you've got some evergreen shrubs pretty close to those fences. Can they be that close and still get the air they need?
Well, as you are, might be aware, the backside of all of the fences are open. And they are still away from the building slightly, so they do breathe. And the fence that we are proposing is a slotted fence, so it does allow for the breathing. And the white covers that you actually see on that are protection for snow. And the possible one change that the rendering may not have picked up because we had recently had this discussion with the mechanical people is those white covers may actually open up to the other side as opposed towards the building. But the white covers are snow shields. And they are, that fenced-in area is open from the backside on both the other side and this side.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Matt.
I'm happy to make a motion if you're welcome to it.
I was hoping to do both waivers at once.
Okay.
Okay. Unless somebody, any member objects. So I was gonna ask the applicant to discuss the second waiver, which has to do with sidewalk.
Sure. So the, we're asking for a partial waiver of the sidewalk requirement. So the way it reads is that there needs to be a sidewalk built along your property frontage. So along Old Etna Road, there's already a sidewalk in this location. And then what we are proposing, of course, is the construction of the sidewalk from the intersection all the way to our site driveway and then obviously onto our property here. What we're seeking the waiver for, or the partial waiver for, is the portion that would go from this location all the way to the end of the parcel over here and dead in, dead end to no sidewalk. The reasons for that request are multiple. One is the fact that the sidewalk system for Heater Road is actually on the other side of the street. It's over on this side of Heater Road. And so by installing this section of sidewalk, we would essentially be dead-ending that sidewalk to a location where there is no pedestrian access. So it would serve no purpose or benefit to the public. The other reason that we're seeking it is, as Tom Sokolowski mentioned, there's a wetland in this location on the property. And we, installation of that sidewalk would be very close to that wetland. So we would, we would like to stay out of that. There's no need to impact that wetland, in our opinion. And then finally, the intersection itself, Heater Road and Old Etna Road is equipped with a sidewalk. So pedestrian access and continuity with with the rest of the sidewalk system in the area is readily achievable by way of the crosswalks at the intersection. So the pedestrian access out here is excellent through the installation of our sidewalk. And we think that construction of this additional piece of sidewalk would be no benefit to the public and would certainly be a hardship to the applicant.
And also, I should note that there is a full-length sidewalk on the other side of the street as well.
Comments from board members?
Mr. Chair, this is Tim with the planning department. I have a question for, I have a question for the applicant, if they know. I'm just curious. How do, again, if they know, how are, how is the parking lot, that the school's parking lot next door, how is that accessed by students? How are, how do students cross Heater Road to the extent that you know? Or Dave, David, maybe, maybe you know.
I'm sorry, Jeff. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I can, I can tell you that I'm just looking at an aerial. And there is a crosswalk at the intersection of Bixby and Heater Road, which allows people to cross from the parking lot to the sidewalk network that's on the opposite side of the road, the school side of the parking lot. I can see that on a, an aerial image.
Thank you.
This is Brian. I agree with that. I looked at that this morning, and that's accurate.
Any other comments from board members? Let me do a quick check. Gregorio Laurel, or either of you now on the call. And do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak? All right, then I will entertain a motion for.
Oh, not me?
Now, hang on a second. We have, I believe, someone from the public. Mr. King?
He's muted.
Mr. King, you're muted.
Yes, this is James King.
So would you please just spell your name for the recording secretary and tell us where you live?
My name is James King, J A M E S K I N G. And I live on thirteen Old Etna Road.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
So the pads, I'm trying to look where the second pad, I see the first pad is way over to the right near the entrance. But the second pad, is it on the parking lot side? Or is it, oh, so it's over, is it where your hand is, that hand is there?
Yes, it is.
All right. I, you know, I just, I live across the street and this whole, this whole building with COVID, you know, there's a lot of things that go on, change things and everything. But I was opposed to allowing a zoning change on this, but it happened. But anyways, I'm worried about the light pollution and the noise factor. And that being over there, I don't know how much noise these make. But it's, it's gonna resonate over towards my house. And that's, that's one of my concerns. I, I'm glad they're not on the roof. Some of these heavy air things are on the roof. But that's, that's one of my concerns there. And as far as what we've already covered in this pad is where that is located. I'd prefer to see it on the parking lot side, sort of, so that the building shields some of that noise.
And if I could address that real quick, this is Jerry Weebolt again.
Yes, Jerry.
One of the things that Jeff could point out is that pad and its location actually will be down in grade. There's a stone wall that we will be putting in place. And the grade actually drops. And Jeff, I'm not quite sure how many feet, but it is about a three or possibly four-foot grade difference from the existing grade to where that pad elevation will fall. So that will help in noise as well. But as you are probably well aware from heat pump units that might be on the side of your house, they are not necessarily that loud, per se. And these two units are going to be actually next to an apartment building. I mean, an apartment unit. So there will be some more concern, I think, to the residents as opposed to across the street. It should also be noted, there is substantial landscaping around this whole site to actually cut down on what you might be considering light pollution and possible noise. So it's a very established wooded lot now. And we're actually going to recreate a fairly beautifully landscaped wooded lot. But to re, to resonate again, the elevation is six twelve at the stone wall. And it goes down to six oh nine. So it's a good three feet in grade elevation change. So you probably, from across the street, will be looking more towards the the top of it as opposed to straight across. And if you're directly across the street on that corner, you actually will be looking at more of the two stories of the building as opposed to three stories of the building. And then, of course, the landscaping along that whole front entrance.
All right, that answers, that answers my question regarding the noise. And so you talked about the landscaping. Is there gonna be some trees going back in there? Or is it just shrubbery?
All right, it is, is both trees and shrubbery. This is a very good representation, although it might be farther away from where you live, but you can look across the street. And you would see a fairly organized stand of trees. And then there is shrubbery also along the base. As Jeff pointed out earlier, there is a wetlands barrier that we are going to be building, and part of that does require vegetation.
Yeah. And I did have a question on that wetland as well. Is, is there gonna be, there's not gonna be standing water in that? I mean, I've seen some of those that have standing water, but it looks like it goes to one end and drains. And it, and it's built to absorb the heavy flow of water possibly coming off of the roofs and stuff or in the area and then dissipate? Or is there gonna be some standing water in that, in one, one end?
No, you're, you're exactly right. So it's called a bioretention system. So it's not to be misunderstood. It's definitely not a wetland. The way it works is during a storm event, that particular best management practice receives runoff from the roof, or at least a portion of the roof. It enters that system. There may be water in it during the actual storm, of course. But the water is allowed to filtrate through the bioretention media into the subsoils. And then during real large storm events, twenty-five-year storms, fifty-year storms, there is an overflow so that it discharges out of the system. But that is not a system that is designed to permanently hold water. It is not a puddle or a pool or anything like that. It's a dry system.
All right, thank you.
All right, Matt Hall?
Hi, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move that the Lebanon Planning Board approve the waivers for the application of Lebanon Housing Authority and Bain Stevenson Property Owner for 258 Heater Road, Tax Map 64 Lot 7, number PB 2020-21-SPR from the following sections of the Site Plan Review Regulations. A partial waiver of Section 6.2D. Staff, do you need me to read that, read this out, or is just saying partial waiver of the section sufficient?
I, I think it's sufficient just to read partial waiver.
Okay. So partial waiver of Section 6.2D and a partial waiver of Section 6.5B4.
Do I have a second?
Exactly. Jerry.
Jerry, thank you. Any discussion? All right, I am going to do a roll call of votes and I will start with Matt.
And Matt votes aye?
I vote aye. Jerry?
Jerry votes aye.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes, and Jerry's name is not spelled correctly.
Sorry.
Where do you see that?
On this motion second.
Oh, okay, thank you. Is it Jeremy or is it Jerry?
I go by the last name.
Rutter, are you T T E R?
And Kim?
Kim votes aye.
So that is unanimous, thank you. All right. Further discussions? What I intend to do is ask board members for any other discussions. Then I will have one last check with the public, see if anyone has any further comments. Then I'll close the public hearing. And then we'll go into deliberations and we'll have a motion to approve this project. So any further discussions from board members?
Mr. Chair?
Cameras on, I don't know if you intended that.
Oh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Matt?
You already said it, I already said it, but I just want to, I do want to say again, I really appreciate the applicant giving us really, really thorough renderings and photographs. I think it really helped our conversation. And I also want to thank them again for answering my, my, my traffic and bus questions. I think it was very helpful and they answered in a way that, that was very clear. So again, I just want to say thank you to the applicant.
Any other comments, questions from board members?
This is Kathy, I had a question at the last meeting about the number of handicap accessible units. I think the proposal is for one one-bedroom, one-two-bedroom, one-three-bedroom, as I recall. And I was wondering if any of the additional first-floor units could be made handicap accessible since there's a great shortage of them in the area. And I didn't hear any comments, yea or nay, about that.
Good question. Applicant?
Yes, this is Jerry Weebolt again. And to address that issue, we as a tax credit project are required to provide 5% accessible units. That is a fully accessible unit, which is all over the grab bars in the bathroom, typically a roll-in shower. And it should be noted that actually a roll-in shower for a 44-unit is not required. However, we are required, we will be installing roll-in showers. And they are, you are correct, they are the one, two, and a three-bedroom unit. 5% would actually only require us to do two units. We are doing three units. They are scattered in the building. We typically don't like to designate a particular wing or a floor as accessible or not accessible. However, the whole building as a whole is fully adaptable, which means the route of access from front door to a third-floor apartment down the furthest point is completely accessible by someone in a wheelchair, by the use of the elevator. And all of the entrance doors will be 36-inch widths, giving them complete access to the apartments. Once within side of an apartment, the adaptability becomes an issue of which every apartment 100% will have blocking in the wall, in the bathrooms. The particular space will be given to the bathrooms, not necessarily the five-foot turning radius, but as code will allow, we don't have to provide a five-foot turning radius. We provide possibly a front access to sinks, things like that once in the bathroom. But 100% of the units are considered and will be considered adaptable. And as ANSI points out, adaptability is the ANSI's equal to a type B unit, which again is a fully adaptable unit. And it allows entrance into the apartment in a, with a person in a wheelchair. And once within that unit, ask access to bathrooms and possibly even bedrooms. The kitchens in the fully accessible units will have complete accessibility, which basically means the roll-in under the sink, certain distances between one side of the kitchen or the other. Within an adaptable unit, you still design for possible use of a person in a wheelchair, but it is not completely accessible. Every adaptable unit, just the characteristics of one of those units can be made accessible with the exception of possibly changing out a tub unit to a roll-in shower. Because a roll-in shower requires a complete clear space of 60 inches. And a tub conversion to a roll-in is usually about 58 inches. So it's, it is a little bit less accessible, but they are completely adaptable. And should a person need the grab bars, the blocking is in the wall to support a grab bar. And every other condition that's required to be a type B unit or adaptable unit is met.
Thank you for that, Kathy. That satisfy your question?
Well, I was asking what the answer was, if they were increasing the number of units. And I guess the answer is no, so.
I think so, at least at this time. Matt, did I hear your voice?
Um, no, I was, I was contemplating making a motion, but I figure I should wait a little.
Yeah, I think so, all right. So what I plan on doing is obviously closing this discussion as a public hearing. But once I do that, we'll no longer take any comments from the public, obviously. But board members will no longer have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. Once I close it, we'll go into deliberations and then we'll move to a motion. So before I close the public hearing, I will first of all ask whether there's anyone from the public who hasn't spoken who wishes to speak. And then to check with board members that you've asked all your questions and then I'll close the public hearing. Is that clear? So first of all, anyone from the public who wishes to make a comment? All right, I don't hear anyone, so board.
There is one hand raised.
There is a hand.
Mr. King, I see your hand is raised.
He's muted.
I think you're muted again.
Yeah, this is, this is James King, J A M E S.
We got it. Thank you.
So I have my main concern, first I want to, I want to indicate with, like I started to say before and I just went to my question is, with COVID not being able to attend a meeting, we have to do it electronically. I tried to get onto the electronic meeting first when we had the zoning approval chain or changing the zoning of that area, and I was opposed to it. Could not get on to the computer. Was, was able to call the next day or the following day and to the zoning members, and they said to be in the meeting. When we did have the last meeting that we, I was told was, there was going to be one, which was in August, we were told you weren't taking comments from them. And I'd heard that the zoning was already permitted for the change. So I, I don't know what the process normally is. If I was to oppose it, if that would have been enough to stop it anyway. So I mean, it's water under the bridge, I guess, at this point. And then my other concern is, I, I think there's a great need for low-income housing in Lebanon. And I, I personally think it's got to be homes, not apartments. I don't consider apartments homes, I consider them a dwelling. And that's just my opinion, that the whole development of the Lebanon area is too concentrated on apartments and condos and not enough on homes. And I think that's all I need to say.
All right, thank you for that comment. Anyone else from the public? So board members, this is your last opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. All right, I don't hear any board member, so I am now closing the public hearing. And we go into deliberations. Does anyone have, before we, I asked Matt Hall for a motion, does anyone have anything that they would like to add to what has already been discussed? Hearing silence, I think that that indicates that, Kathy, did you have something?
No.
You just popped up.
Oh, no.
I will now turn to Matt Hall and ask for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I will make one comment before I do that. I do, I do feel for the resident we just heard, I do think that this technology is imperfect. And I, I personally hope we get back to in-person meetings as soon as possible. I would like to make a motion. I move that the Lebanon Planning Board approve the application of Lebanon Housing Authority and Bain Stevenson Property Owner for Site Plan Review to construct a proposed 45,678-square-foot multifamily dwelling with 44 dwelling units, together with parking utilities, landscaping, and other related site improvements. At 258 Heater Road, Tax Map 64 Lot 7, Zoned RO1, Number PB 2020-21-SPR, as shown on a plan set titled Heater Landing Apartments Granite Engineering LLC, dated July 13, 2020, last revised July 27, 2020, Project Number 20-0127-1, 19 sheets, including any and all submissions and testimony provided for and during the public hearing with the following conditions. Conditions to be satisfied prior to application for a building permit. One, the applicant shall schedule and hold a pre-building permit application meeting with the Planning and Development Department, City Building Inspectors, City Engineering, Department of Public Works, and Fire Department in order to help streamline the building permit review process and to review applicable code requirements. Two, the applicant shall obtain approval from the city council or the city manager's office for any additional water and/or sewer flows in accordance with the applicable chapter, applicable chapter 136 and 182 of the city code. Three, all engineering review fees shall be paid in full as required by Section 4.7E1 of subdivision regulations. Four, all sewer and water use permit fees shall be paid as set forth in City Code Chapter 68. Conditions to be satisfied prior to the issuance of a building permit. Five, the city shall retain the services of an independent third-party inspector for which the applicant shall be responsible for all inspection fees related to the construction of sewer and water, both onsite and work within the city's right-of-way, water, sewer, road, drainage, and in accordance with Chapter 136 and 182 of the city code and Section 8.2 of the Site Plan Review Regulations. The applicant shall provide funding for inspection services in a form and amount acceptable to the city and shall sign a water and sewer extension and inspection agreement in accordance with Chapters 136 and 182 of the city code. Six, the development shall be subject to city of Lebanon impact fees pursuant to Section 213 of the zoning ordinance. The impact fee shall be calculated at the time of building permit issuance based on the impact fee schedule adopted on August 13, 2018. And in accordance with RSA 67439, the approved site plan shall be exempt from any future changes in the impact fees and methodology for five years from the date of approval. However, any building permits which are issued after the end of that five-year period shall be fully subject to whatever impact fees and methodology are in effect at the time of building permit issuance. Seven, all sewer connection fees shall be paid. Eight, construction or installation of any new driveways should require driveway permit and excavation permit from the city. Nine, prior to the start of any construction activities on the property, the applicant shall obtain or update, if appropriate, any required state approvals, including but not limited to the following: NHDES alteration of terrain permit, if necessary, NHDES sewer connection permit, if necessary. Conditions to be satisfied prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Ten, the impact fee calculated pursuant to condition of approval number six shall be paid. Eleven, third-party engineer or design engineer inspection reports and as-built drawings provided by the applicant's PDF format and CAD DWG format using the New Hampshire State Plane Coordinate System, including tie sheets, shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to acceptance of any utility improvements by the city. Twelve, all improvements depicted on the plan shall be completed and shall be constructed as depicted on the approved plan, including any modifications to the plan as may be approved by the planning board in accordance with the Site Plan Review Regulations. General conditions. Thirteen, the applicant shall obtain an excavation permit from the Department of Public Works for any site work in the public right-of-way prior to any work in the right-of-way. Fourteen, all required landscape planting shall meet the minimum size requirements for such planting set forth in Section 6.2B of the Site Plan Review Regulations at the time of installation. Fifteen, the applicant shall implement and maintain NHDES site-specific best management practices before, during, and after construction. Sixteen, the property owner is responsible for the maintenance and operation of the stormwater management system in accordance with the O E N M plan and such responsibilities shall run with the land, Section 6.6 H2B of the Site Plan Review Regulations.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it, Kathy.
Kathy, thank you, Kathy. Discussion. I confess, I have one point that I should have raised before. We had a very useful discussion about the sighting of the bus stop. I don't think it's worth changing the motion, but Brian, could I leave it with you and the applicant to see if that could be adjusted? Does that make sense?
This is Tim, I, I think the motion should be amended to, to, to require that, excuse me.
I would, I would agree with that. If you want it to be a condition of approval, you need to make it a condition of approval.
All right, so we would be modifying.
I'll remove my second.
Thank you, Kathy. So it would be, I think, item number 12?
Yeah.
Shall be completed. So how would, Tim, how would you suggest we worded all improvements depicted on the plan shall be completed, subject to further review by staff of the site of the bus?
I, I would put it, I would put it up here in, in, under conditions to be satisfied prior to application for a building permit, because we want that, we want that plan to be finalized.
Yes.
And so I would just add number five and then what, I mean, I can, we can work on some verbiage, but you had started something, Bruce. I mean, we could, we could say the applicant, or the plans shall be revised to relocate the bus pull-off because closer to the, the access drive to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
Yeah. To me. I, I'm okay, I'm okay with that.
Brian Vincent, are you, does, does this make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense to me, yes.
David Brooks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask, Tim, can I ask, sorry, sorry, Bruce, may I make up? Tim, one, one real quick thing, if, with this, let's say that in the end, the applicant and our very able city engineer decide, all right, to heck with it, it's, we're just going to leave it where it is in the original plans. Um, would they have to then come back to us to?
I mean, yeah, I think so, the, the, with, if, if, either the board wants it to be moved or, or, or it doesn't. And I think the city engineer expressed some, um, uh, the, yeah.
Tim, can I comment on that? This is Brian.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, I would say, I, I don't know if I agree with that because it says to the satisfaction of the engineer. If I was happy with a zero change, then I'm happy. Uh, I mean, and, and there could be an argument to be made that says the zero change makes sense. We haven't talked to the bus operation, we haven't talked with the engineer in detail about after having him had a chance to look at this closer. So it may make sense to have zero.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm, oh, sorry, sorry Bruce.
No, I, I'd just say, I, I agree with that, I think that's a great response. Matt?
I, I, and I'm happy with this um, condition number five as written and with, with that understanding from Brian.
And, and I'm happy with it too, because I, I think it, it could be moved six inches and qualify.
Right, right. Okay, but at least we have it in our conditions. Any other discussion? So I'm going to do a roll call of votes, I will start this time with Kathy.
Kathy votes yes.
Kim? Kim, were you muted?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, this is Tim, did Kathy had withdrawn her second?
No, I, I, I put it back.
You did.
She put it back after making the. Kim?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Kim votes yes.
Matt?
Matt votes aye.
I vote yes and Jeremy.
Jeremy or Jerry votes yes.
Thank you, we are unanimous. Thank you to the applicant for making this a um, a very easy to understand application with everything you have provided, including the video.
Thank you, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, good night.
Tonight.
Thank you.
Do we have any other business?
Uh, nothing for tonight's agenda.
I didn't think so. So, Mr. Hall, your favorite motion.
Oh, actually, Mr. Chair, I have a question for you while we're, while some of us are here anyway. Do we have, do we have another special meeting a week from today?
We do.
Okay, I was looking on the, on the uh, schedule and the what, the, the city's website and didn't see it, so I wasn't sure if it was still there, okay.
Well, there, as we discussed at the beginning of this meeting, there's a problem. If you go to live, you'll see something, if you don't go to live, you won't see it, so.
Oh, I didn't hear that, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I tried to get in with live.
The board's, the board's special meeting for September tenth is listed in the live, in the list of live um, webpage. On the live webpage, so it is there and it is at the bottom of the homepage as well.
With that being the case, Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
A second.
Yes.
Jerry?
Yeah.
That was you, all right. Um, I'm gonna start this one, I vote yes. Jerry?
Jerry votes aye.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Kim?
Kim votes yes.
And Matt?
Matt votes aye.
We are unanimous and we are adjourned, thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you, well done everyone.